I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
And we have building inspector, Richard Alexak.
This is Kate.
That's you.
Um, did you give her any copy?
It's in the package.
I'll tell you what happened. I got involved because the Board of Health got some complaints about 21 Camp John Road, about the hunkered odor coming from the place. And upon investigating, they found that the first room there was a hoarder and the place was beyond repair. So they wanted to tear it down. And I explained to the Board Health, you just can't go in and tear somebody's house down. So I got involved and got Ziggy Korth, who is an architect out of East Worthville, who is already stationed, come over, take a look at it. He gave three reports saying that the place should be torn down. So I met with Mr. Loke. He's the owner of the property. I explained to him that we looked at the property, it should be torn down. He agreed with us and said, yes, you're right, it should be torn down. He said, I have no money. So he said, I've got some interest in buying the place if I do get it cleaned up. So I suggested to him that if he's willing to, we can tear the place down, open it up on approaches and put a lien on the property. He owes $11,000 on the house now. I figured to buy a lot itself with no house on his property worth $65,000 so we get our money back. He said that he could probably pay for a tear down with the empty tangies he's got in the house. But I thought that would be necessary, that I'd try to get it approved by the town, tear it down, put a lien, and once it's down, Kevin Keener's interested in buying the property so we get our money back out of it.
Yeah, but like anything else, you say, we don't know that for a fact. The only we know for a fact is you and the Board of Health and the building inspector believe it should be turned down, turned down.
Yeah. Who is it? It's obviously rental property. Who's? Nobody's in here?
No, he doesn't even live there.
So there's nobody in there?
Nobody in the house. House is vacant.
What about utilities? All off?
All off.
How much is the other town? $11,000 back taxes? Is that on the mortgage?
That's for the old time. The property itself don't have the mortgage. You got a mortgage on it.
Does he have anything against the town? Have anything against him?
No, he's all attached and current.
He's paid the taxes and?
Yep.
How big of a lot is this? Because over there you have?
Tiny.
Huh?
Tiny.
Yeah, because you've got to worry about non-conforming over there. If you tear down a structure?
That's what you have to do is tear down, leave the foundation, there's a big rebuild on the foundation.
So they can only build on the footprint?
Right.
How big a footprint?
Small.
It's very small. They're cottages.
Yeah, I mean, they're original four rooms at most, if they were that.
The question I have, Rich, is are we legally bound to do this at this point?
No. And I sent them a letter, I missed that type of letter. I sent them, that's the first signature to tell us that it's okay to tear this down. He's moving everything, you know. And we have a signature back in, that's how we're going to sign.
But we're not, you don't think it's so bad that we have to tear it down?
The neighbors are all complaining about it.
Yeah, what's causing the smell?
He's a hoarder.
What's in there that's?
Everything.
Yeah.
What, I mean, food, organic materials that's rotting away?
I think the house is rotting away.
Yeah, the foundations are all rotting away, all the, the still plate everything.
Rich, how's the?
Ziggy Korth went in there and said, I just.
Yeah, but rotting wood doesn't usually smell so bad the neighbors complain about it.
But mold does.
Oh, mold, that's molding.
The whole roof is covered in mold.
How's the property in the back? Is there much?
Do you see this list of things?
No, but is there any material that was dumped?
No. He's got everything cleaned up. He brought a dumpster and started cleaning it.
Yes, page four.
Page four.
He said, my daughter has to be cleaned up so it'll all be empty by April 1st, so we take it down. You know. He's being receptive to us.
But at this point in time, unless he's.
I'm just worried about, I mean, I remember years ago, we had a similar issue like this on Gun Road with Charlie Will Matt, and we had to be very careful with our legal background because we might end up owning all his.
Right. I don't, I don't know that we should undertake a voluntary teardown unless we first, without talking to town council.
I just want, I'm just going to talk, let me see what the comments from the other members have.
I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea, but I don't know that we should stick our neck out that far at this point in time without talking to town council because until you say it's a mandatory, under your authority, you're tearing it down, I don't, I don't know where, what.
I just want to be cautious that, you know, if we're obligated because it's a detriment, it's a health hazard, it's, it's a safety to the neighborhood, a safety issue, it is boarded up right now, right?
No.
Is there free access into that building?
You can walk right in the front door, that ain't locked.
So isn't that right, isn't that a violation in itself?
Okay, so, you know, how far you want to push this?
Well, I'm just looking at the town and how far we're going to get stuck in this if we do the wrong thing.
But if it's not boarded up and a kid walks in there, I'm not saying we are.
Is the house condemned?
I haven't condemned it, but it can be condemned just for an order from Ziggy Korth.
Well, then do your job. Condemn it if it needs to be condemned, boarded up, and then let's take it to the next step.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, but at the point of condemnation is when we have the right to go in on our own and take, and tear it down, is that what?
No, we can now. It doesn't have to be condemned to do it, or to whose state was. That's why I say.
I guess I'm confused. Right now, you were looking for him to voluntarily let us tear it down.
Right.
And has he?
This, this actually runs a health problem because of the neighbors and the smell and everything else. And they were just going to tear it down, and I said, you can't do that. I said, I've got to get approval. I've got to say that the house is not worth saving, blah, 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 which is what Ziggy Korth did. He went over and.
Well, why don't we go through the normal steps?
Let it be condemnation.
Well.
So Richard, is the owner okay with that?
Yes. I'm just looking for his signature back at it, but yes, he was.
To just to tear it down?
He realized it was his house, the house, the messes, and you know.
And he lives other?
Yes, he lives with his daughter in Westville.
My suggestion, there's two ways. First one is, we need to talk to the lawyer in both cases. First, he should be drawing the document that protects the town, number one, that we can do this, and he signs off accordingly with all the justification to protect the town because we're going to do this. And by doing that, we take care of the health issue, we take care of the smell issue, we take care of the safety issue. But the other thing too that they should look at, are we going to open up any doors that's going to cost us other money because we now are taking away his housing, which we need to talk to council about?
The other thing is, if it's open, should we board it up?
Well, I mean, that's his job. If he determines it's condemned, he should board it up. That's, that's his job, when that.
He's still got stuff in there.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're saying the front door, if you're saying the front door's open and it's rotted to the point where somebody goes in there through the front door and falls through the floor, at some point in time, should we have boarded that up for public safety?
If I can, definitely.
We know, we know now, it's public, we know it, we're obligated to do something.
I think we, I think the first step is, we need to board it.
Well, I think you should be talking to council.
Yeah.
If you need be, if you need emergency actions and that, Dr. Reggie will.
Yeah.
Call me just for that.
But the other thing is, the waste, I mean, all this debris after we knock it down, are we responsible for that? I mean, is he going to take any responsibility with how much it's going to cost us to dispose of the material of the house?
Well, you'll have to go out the bins, right, Rich?
About as much as be over $5,000, I'll be a three bins owner.
Well, in this situation, I'd be happy, because you're going to have to manifest these loads, in other words, you have to cradle the grave. They're being taken out, we're going to have to know where they're going to go. We don't want somebody coming in ripping it and scavenging this stuff, and we're being responsible for that. I think it should be bid, so.
All right.
But I do think that the most paramount thing we should be doing is talking to council to give you direction. And if you need our actions, the board agrees to, yeah, they have to.
All right.
Yeah, but I think we need to talk to town council before we do.
And Mike's got a good point. If, if we have to rip it down, you know, and we've got to recoup our cost, if it's not conforming, we're not going to recoup our cost, okay, unless we sell a lot to adjacent property.
You've got to save the foundation.
Yeah, but I saw in your letter that the foundation's crumbling.
Well, he put an addition on it at one time, you know, the addition, which don't prevent it from dropping, the condition is falling off the house.
Architect also mentions possible hazards, asbestos, lead. I mean, that could take a bit to clean up the soil.
That's why you need, that's why you have to manifest all these loads to know where they go and their dump.
Is that what that means?
Yeah.
Manifest the load?
Yeah.
Like a hazard, has that comes in and?
You know there's lead in there. I mean.
Oh, yeah, there's a whole outage.
Yeah, there's lead. What kind of heating system did it have? Is there, what kind of septic?
Yeah.
Septic's not on his property. Septic's on the neighbor's property.
Oh, there goes more problems trying to sell that problem.
Well, the other thing too is, meant to dig a bigger hole, but how far are we from the pond? 200 feet?
Oh, you're further than that away from the pond itself.
You've got to think, you've got, conservation has to get involved.
If you go around by Camp John, it's up through the house up past Camp John, coming back toward County Road.
I think we talk to town council and decide our options and then come back. But if, if safety's an issue, then order the damn thing boarded up.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Rich.
Do we table the minutes?
Yes, we still tabled the minutes.
On your agenda, it says that it's done, so it's my mistake.
No, it's all right.
So can we, do we have enough folks here now?
Or do we have to have full board?
Well, we don't have.
David's not here because he's the one that had the problem with the manure, so we don't have to deal with it.
So does someone want to make a motion to approve the various minutes that are listed there? Has everybody had a chance to review them? I would certainly accept a minute, a motion after about four months of trying to get everybody here.
Correct.
To approve the minutes, to get that off our.
Now, the executive, we have to do those in executive session.
We should do those in executive session.
Okay. I make a motion to approve 1214, 1212, 1204, 1120, 1115, 1113, regular sessions. I believe the rest are executive. Reggie?
I'll tell you in a minute.
Is the, the other ones are all executive minutes?
You have November 20th, November 15th, is that what you said?
13.
Just to look at your, the first six, those are all regular, because I see regular here. And then I see executive here, meaning.
That's, that's for the 13th, looks like.
Oh, that's just for the 13th?
I think.
The rest are all regular.
Okay. With the exclusion of 1113, I recommend the above approval of the minutes.
Would you modify that to approve the 1113 regular session minutes and just exempt the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finally.
We have a payroll warrant.
We have a bill warrant.
Bill warrant, bill warrant, rather. Okay, nothing next to bill. I'm reading down the thing. Got a bill warrant for W. 1330 for $93,139,14 cents.
Move to accept the bill warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
And then we have PCS. We have Zachary Colita, date of hire 113, 150, is that what we made him, 1503?
Yeah, we did a 1503.
For firefighter EMT. We have Joseph Veal, date of hire 113, 1503, firefighter EMT. We have a resignation from Steve Hyde Jr., been on since 6/20/07, last day working 12/21/12. There's a letter attached. And this is, I would suggest is involuntary resignation. Chief Colita sent Stephen Jr. a letter asking him to contact him if he intended to stay on the force, and there was no contact. So the chief is seeking to terminate him based on that. We have Zachary Bigda, date of hire 4/4/09, last day working 12/31/12. A letter came from Mr. Bigda to the chief, resignation as of May 31st. And we have Michael Moran, date of hire 114/13, replaces Jonathan, says Monick, 1593. No position. Is this the highway?
1250, heavy equipment operator.
Heavy equipment operator for the highway department. Anyone want to make a motion to sign those various PCS?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing else in there?
No, nothing else in the signature. Just so everybody's up to date, Reggie, we posted the town administrator position for the close date of?
February 28th.
February 28th, and everything's coming to my locate, my, my home address. And we'll have to decide how we want to handle that after, and see what comes. Did we post fire chief?
No. We, uh, do you want to explain to him or you want me to?
It's in the packet, a copy of.
Oh, yes, I have.
I received a letter from Chief Modder.
Oh, yes.
We received a letter from Chief Modder, it's in your package.
What page do we know?
It's towards the end.
What's?
Right after the last PCS.
Page 10 of 13.
He reviewed our package and he's made some recommendations for requirements. If I may, I'll go over them.
Go ahead.
And the good part of this is Reggie, at the same time I did this, was talking to the fire marshal. When I handed this to Reggie, we went through this, and she concurred that the fire marshal agreed to the same things that are in this letter, that we shouldn't hire him based on his qualifications. After I reviewed the job description for the Southam Chief, I think the minimum qualifications should be slightly altered to include the following. One, obtain and maintain accreditation as a fire chief through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Let me explain this. It's only a sitting chief that can get that, okay? Captain who comes in cannot get that unless he's appointed chief, and then he can go after and get that. So a sitting chief has to have that, can get that if he's a sitting chief. The second thing is obtain and maintain certification as a fire prevention officer, basic, and it says level, but it should be level one. Level two hasn't been made available yet, but at least basic and level one is fire prevention credentials. And the third thing, he, and we require it too, is incident command and training level 300 to 400. I'm a level 400. I think Chief Hyde was a level 200 and possibly a level 300. Chief Silvino is also a level 400. The 300 and 400 does is, it gives you the chain of command and also allows you training to go and assist in other bigger communities, to assist them, to help spell people, and to work with them under a command corps system, and best management practices. The other thing too is that he also mentions that there's this new program set up under the Fire Chiefs Academy, is that after he's appointed, it's a 13-week period that if we could send him once a week for this, Massachusetts Fire Academy Chief Field Officer Management Training, it's, it's highly desirable and very beneficial to keep him current with more modern standards. And both Chief Modder and according to Reggie, the fire marshal agrees these things should be part of our minimum requirements.
I like it. The only question I have is to put the chief out of town one day, we run into the same thing as when.
You hire somebody for 13 weeks.
Yeah, but I'm saying we have the same problem. We have to hire somebody for that day, he's out of town.
Or he has staffing tool.
Right. And the other thing is, what kind of financial incentive?
I mean, that was suggested, but I think that's something that we talk about when we hire, you know, the salary.
Okay, that's a.
It might be left alone, it might be just a requirement on the job.
All right, so do we, does anybody want to make a motion to include all of those as requirements in the posting?
I make a motion to include the items explained here by, is it, Fire Chief of East Hampton Fire Department, David Motor, and to incorporate.
Motor, you're right, I'm sorry.
And to incorporate them in our job description, Fire Chief.
All right. How, we're going to have Reggie, we have that, we have the basic one.
Well, we did, we decided, and I'm just talking for generality, we decided to take the degree requirement out of that.
Right.
Okay, and we'll just add that in.
Yeah, we'll put these in next place.
We agreed to years of experience in management, right?
Right.
I think we agreed to, it has to be a high school diploma. I believe we agreed, and I don't have the potentials in front of me, but everything else was fine. The skills, the goals, the requirements, I don't think we changed those, mostly the educational requirements.
I think we just, education. You need a second, a second.
Okay, and my only point is, are we going to have Reggie draft them into the thing and then bring it back to us, or are we just going to draft it and post it?
Well, while we have her drafted, you look at it. If you're fine with it, post it.
All right, then why don't I suggest you, both of us, to both of us?
I can look at it after she gets it ready.
Yeah.
Send it to everybody.
Yeah.
Send it to everybody, and then if anybody has an objection to it.
We can take it up next week. We're meeting next week, am I right?
Right.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so that gives you a week to draft it into that, and we'll bring it back next week and do it.
Vote.
Oh, all in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
All right. Upcoming, we have.
Actually, that next item in your packet is for Charlie and April. They're here to talk to you about the.
Oh, town. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Town warning, town owner agreements? Oh, okay, Charlie.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know what I was reading.
Is it engine? Yeah.
Are they on here?
They're for open time.
Oh, okay.
He needed a letter.
That's fine.
We have a vote on developing an offer for Pioneer Valley Railroad. And I think the one thing that April has developed is a, a draft offer, which I guess we're looking for support to send it to Katie Klein to fill in the blanks and fill it out according to state law.
That's not in our packet, is it?
Oh, there's a letter in there from.
It's the last page, 13, as a draft.
Oh, 13? Oh, oh, okay, I was reading that as a continuation of the letter. Thank you.
I don't know why it's not doing that.
Does everybody have a chance to look at this? Not that it?
Hope we're trying to get it.
Well, myself and Jackie are in this group discussing this. We wanted to go to town council, and I'm sure they're going to add.
Yeah.
Okay, and I have some suggestions. And we, actually, we want to see what the suggestions are, so how we can incorporate into our strategy.
So do we want to make a move to let the Conservation Commission discuss the purchase, offer to purchase with town council on the railroad?
Well, this committee is.
Yeah.
The negotiating.
No, negotiating committee.
Yeah.
All right. Mike and Reggie, I just want, is Kathy Klein the only person that does the real estate?
No, obviously not, because we got the email today on the tax, well, at least the tax title, which I needed to ask you about. I didn't know where those properties were.
Because when we talk about this, my suggestion is, I like the attorneys to give us the most seasoned person with the railroad. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there was somebody else that sent the.
I forwarded to you guys, but.
Yeah, the email that came today was tax, I'm assuming he's, he had a tax title or real estate. I wouldn't think.
The treasurer collector deals with that attorney. I don't know if that's part of the Copelman Pages team.
Well, it looked like it.
We can find out.
Find out. Well, you can ask, Katie Klein is certainly one that dealt with.
I know, but I don't want to, my suggestion, my experience with this is, I did have talked to Kanter. Is that her name?
Yeah.
Kanter. They do have had experience with some railroads, purchasing the stuff on the other parts of the state. I just don't want to reinvent the wheel here and pay for something twice.
Well, the other side of the point is.
I'd rather have somebody that has some seasonal experience with that firm, we can deal with that.
You can always call Lenny Copelman and ask him, he's, I have a 1-800 direct dial for him, I think, do you have it?
I'm not sure. I'll look in the Rolodex.
I have a 1-800 number in the office for him.
Okay.
I guess I would talk, call him and talk to him about what's going on. I got.
Jackie, don't you think we should have a seasoned person?
Oh, you definitely want seasoned person.
Yeah, that's my feeling.
Because there's a million problems that are, that could come up with this. I mean, someplace along the line, either it was the Northampton one, or the, right away, wasn't a uniform with, people had encroached over the years, there were problems with adverse possession and that sort of thing, and dumps and dumpings.
I just don't want to get in the middle of something and find out if another attorney in the firm dealt with this at a much larger level and has experienced what we might be experiencing, rather than start all over again, knew where to know where.
Well, and if, and if we find that there isn't somebody, we can always go out and get somebody else who, they've done these before. I don't know who did Northampton or East Hampton, but.
East Hampton, they had a citizen, suicide.
I wonder if they handled this.
I don't know. Well, we have to start with Copelman.
We have to start with Copelman.
We'll see if they have a seasoned person that's done this before we, you know, because this is going to cost us money.
Oh, yeah. Just drafting this and reviewing this. So I, I mean, do you want? Who's going to be the point person? You're not all going to call the office. Who's going to be the point person to call?
No, but what I would like to do is, my suggestion is, Jackie can be there, and I can be there, and I'd like to have Reggie there, so we have this discussion, and you two guys can be there, on the phone with Leonard, and tell him what our views are and how we want this done.
And that's fine. Why don't you go on?
And then, you know, there's going to be changes, because I know this is not going to happen overnight, but there'll be changes in personnel, but at least Reggie knows, Jackie knows, or I know, or a combination of that, that who's going to be caring about me. But at least, um, Reggie knows, Jackie knows, or I know, or a combination of that, that, who's gonna be caring about me?
All right, and, and so the question is, who's gonna make the contact? Do you wanna make the contact?
Well, the three of us, the five, the five of us can make the contact in a meeting.
With Lenny?
With Lenny on the phone. We'll post that, okay? So we all hear the same thing.
Do you have to post, other because you're-
Uh, we're gonna be in a meeting, we might make a decision.
I would, I would call him, there is a number, it's from the left.
I'll look on-
It's, it's several chairmanships ago, I, I got a call from him, and, you know, it's the old shake your hand and if you have a problem, call me. But, um, I, I think I kept his number in the office.
I mean, the other thing too is, I mean, I know Leonard, Leonard, we don't see much of Leonard anymore. I don't even think he was at MMA, but, um, um, Cantor is principal, am I right?
She's our contact, yeah.
Yeah, she's on contract, she's the principal in the company, is she?
They, they don't list it on the letterhead, so I don't know.
All right. I, I almost wondered if we should start with her. If we don't get any with her, we'll go to Leonard. That's my suggestion.
So that's, so that's step one, you're gonna call Copelman and Page and find out if they have somebody experienced, and you're gonna talk to them. Your committee is gonna talk to him and decide if they have enough experience for this.
Mm-hmm.
And go from there. All right.
I wish it was simple, you could write them down for, present it.
Uh, with the railroad.
What if municipality doesn't walk that way?
Well, then the lawyers get involved after, and they says, oh yeah, that'll work.
Oh, yeah?
Well, then we also have this letter to Mr. Brennan from-
Yes, the second point we wanna discuss this evening. As part of the land grant issues, we're dependent on PVPC, uh, to help us, and they, uh, we have, the Conservation Commission is part of Compact with PVPC. We entered it last July first, and it goes to this July first, more or less free. Um, post-July first, 2013, we're gonna have to pay some money to stay in at $1,200, which the Conservation Commission has agreed to do. And we will be getting, we get ten or twenty hours preconsulting. But in any case, uh, we have been utilizing them helping us to define, um, the assessments of the environmental condition of the railroad track, as well as the engineering assessments. And this is a fairly complicated process. You have to define the content of these assessments, and you have to send out a request for quotes, and then eventually get a request for proposals from a subset of the people to send out the request for quotes from, and then you do, then you evaluate them. And they will, they, based on discussions with the Greenway Committee and the Negotiation Board, we're, this is, we're utilizing them. But the letter, uh, based on the discussions with PVPC, if the environmental assessment turns out to be more complicated than just a Phase One, which is more or less a historical record of what happened on the, on that railroad track over the last hundred years, and releases and whatever was used on it, uh, if we have to go to Phase Two, which is sampling, and if that becomes back rather disastrous or something like that, then you go to Phase Three for a remediation plan, brownfield or grayfield remediation plan. And the basic idea right now, we got the information from PVPC that they have funds that will help us go through Phase Two and Phase Three. And, uh, these are funds that they have, let's see, I have once, this is the P, the Phase One is completed, PVPC has combination of VPA ground field site assessment funds and district local technical assistant grant funds that could be used to perform the Phase Two environmental site assessment. That is soil and groundwater investigation. And Phase Three remedial peanut plan and cost estimate. In order to be eligible, eligible to receive this funding, the Chair of the Select Board or the Chair of the Planning Board needs to submit the attached letter requesting these services. This letter needs to be submitted to PVPC by January thirtieth. And I understand that we can now, it's not on the agenda, so it cannot be signed until next week, on the 29th.
Thought it was on agenda, no?
No.
Well, just the letters in the package.
Yeah, it's just for you guys to see.
So I gave-
Well, it's town owner agreements with PVPC, why doesn't it fit under that job, that description?
Pertains to the Greenway, doesn't it? It's a totally separate item.
Yes.
But, well, I mean, if it, cutting it close, because next week's the 29th. When are you needed by the 5th? Oh, it's gotta be the 30th.
This is, you know, where, where, where do we go on this?
We were gonna take it, scan it and send it like to them electronically, and then-
I can take it down, please.
What's the wording on that?
Town owner agreements with PVPC.
That's discussion.
Well, this is not, is this a prior owners agreement, and whether this is a future agreement? I mean, I don't know.
Well, now he has a compact with PVPC, for he and I.
Here, here's a suggestion. Since we've been having a trouble with quorums, I'm concerned next week we don't have a quorum. What if we dealt with it tonight under the PVPC heading? Make it a specific agenda item next week, and if we're able to deal with it next week. If not, we've got, we've got it done.
One question I have, Charlie, I mean, when we were meeting with you last week, we talked about, um, the Phase One, which wasn't a big deal. The Phase Two, you were talking about in more detail, I think we did last week. That's gonna have a dollar amount that we're gonna have to match? Because the concern I have is-
On this letter-
Um, I don't wanna get into an agreement unless I know there's a dollar money that, if we're supposed to match something on the Phase Two impact.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Um, and it says, we are committed to a, the, the letter itself, on paragraph, we are committed to assessing assistance under this regional effort during 2013 and implementing all resulting brownfield peanut recommendation. We understand that there is a 5% in-kind match required. This requirement will be filled by staff in our Conservation Commission. That's the top.
So in-kind?
In-kind, yeah.
Okay.
I think I volunteered for something. Uh, who will work with PVPC staff to conduct projected qualification, public outreach, and the other activities related to the site. And, uh, if this, this document, I think you have, I anticipate coming back on the 12th on the agenda. You probably have a half hour, and, and really get into more detail of what these assessments look like, or what you're giving involved in here, because it's fairly complicated.
I'm gonna say that.
Basically, the letter, and, uh, if you can get, if we have a copy of the, um, with the town letterhead on?
I did, I did put it on letterhead.
The other thing too is, uh, if there's any doubts, we can say what's fair with us. Chairman of Conservation can do that too, according to what they just wrote.
Can do what?
Sign that document, sign that letter in.
It's either or, am I right? It's Planning Board or us.
No, I thought it was Conservation.
You know, the planning-
Oh, it's Planning Board? I'm sorry. Okay, well, never mind, I'm not gonna talk for the planning board.
So the question is, do we wanna do something tonight under the PVPC owner agreement issue? Or we wait for next week, or what?
I make a motion, we sign under the posting of Pioneer Valley Planning Owners Agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have to wait on Planning Board chair.
Next.
That's it.
Thank you, Charlie, thanks for finding that money.
Thank you.
And April.
Welcome. Off the record, don't forget there's a mortgage on that piece of property you talked about earlier.
Yeah.
That could be bad.
The mortgage or could.
That's why I wanna go to a lawyer.
Um, we have a meeting on the 29th, the 12th, the 19th, and somewhere in there, there's, on there, a special town meeting on the 5th. We have moved the all boards meeting to the 19th. Um, we've already talked-
What's the 12th? We also have a 12th, right?
Yes, February 12th. Um, we also have, we already did the fire chief job, somehow that came up out of order. Um, what was fire, follow up with fire department waivers?
I don't know what that is.
I don't know what that, she's gone. Um, and we gotta come back to Fulmer Road. While she's gone, and I'm waiting for her to come back, we all have to watch that video.
Oh, that's right.
Do you wanna, I was thinking, rather than everybody do it, just come in some night, it's a half hour video, is it? And just do it here?
Yep.
Everybody at one time in a regular meeting?
That'd be a good idea.
And, um, so I was looking, uh, when she comes back, we'll ask her how busy the 29th and the, I think we have 90 days from that letter.
This gal doesn't have to, she was at that meeting.
Oh, she's so good.
She's the only one.
She should give us a, a class.
What's it, no.
But I was thinking, instead of trying to, everybody do it on their own, either-
That's a good idea.
We'll come in and do it here, and somehow we can just put it on-
Doesn't work, we'll just have to get a TV set somewhere.
Or we can, she probably can do it on-
She can get it on this.
And then just have her do it more-
Or a laptop.
Yeah, and then we'll just sit here and do it all in one shot. Yep.
Yeah, you could get a YouTube.
What's that?
Huh?
A YouTube, you know, a little video on your iPad.
Yeah, well, we'll get it somehow, when she comes back, we'll find out.
She probably could download it.
Yeah.
And then we'll be fine.
Yeah, and then we'll just all do it at one time. Um, I don't know whether you guys saw the memo that came out today from the town attorney on, on some, it looks like some tax takings that I knew nothing about. Did you see that?
I saw it and realized that was in the process.
Is it a letter, is it in here somewhere?
I don't think it's, I think, oh, here.
Haven't been home.
Reggie, while you were out, we've decided that we're gonna all watch the video for the, um, ethics at one time. And I think you've told me that the 29th is a busy meeting, right?
Yes.
And the, what about the 12th?
Not so busy.
Not so busy? Can you work out the technical aspects of either getting in, in here or on these? And we'll come in, we'll do it right here, all this together.
Okay.
Except for Jackie.
Jackie's good.
Okay, on the 12th. So the first part of the meeting will be that. I think it's a half hour video, isn't it?
I don't know.
I remember, it's on the bottom of the letter.
Is this when you go through and ask, answer questions and-
That's the ethics and-
Okay, and so this is just electrical?
It's got a video.
Video, all right. Did you, do you have those emails that you sent out on that property today? That we were, we, we somehow came into-
I don't, I can print them.
Would you please, because I don't know where this property is.
Okay.
I don't know how we got it. But it looked like tax taking.
Tax title.
Yeah, and it's ancient, because the guy starts out by apologizing and saying, he inherited it from-
I think two of them, these two are both from Fariter, under Christie.
Yeah, so I mean, that makes how, how-
Takes a long time, I guess, I don't know.
Well, landlord is slow, I mean, even on a good day, it's slow.
Well, a little comment on the letter he wrote, that, you know, it's finally coming around, but it's timely.
Fariter, when was Fariter, the last time he was our town attorney, it's gotta be?
No, Christie had it from tax title work.
Oh.
Separately.
But I don't know anything about this property, and we suddenly, we now own one piece and soon to own the second. So I don't know.
If they're greater than an acre, we should sell them right around.
Well, that's, my thought is, just turn right over and get them out of here. But I don't know whether there's structures on them.
I don't know.
I was hoping you'd know.
Read my email.
Um, I looked at them, they didn't, I think they're landlocked, I think they're landlocked property.
Never get anything.
Get rid of them, sell them to your butters, I don't care.
Yeah, but, basically, if they say, I want, I get to use them for nothing, and you pay the taxes on them.
That's what's happening, we took them, and we're gonna get back.
Someone should have-
But I, I was down, so I couldn't down on it, or anything.
Real estate person involved with it. We don't get involved with it.
No, no.
Let them chase people down, it's easy to go on.
We never did, we nev, while, while she's out doing that, um, everybody remember the Fulmer Road land donation issues? We've never voted to accept that.
No, we gave it to Conservation.
Oh, did they?
It was all wet, remember?
Yeah.
I didn't look at that.
All right, did they do anything with it?
Yeah, they wanna keep it. I think it's, it's close, it's close to their land that they got up on Fulmer Road.
All right, and I have not heard of it on 178 Brickyard Road from, from, uh, Bill O'Grady.
Last week, we didn't re-vote to just leave it alone?
Right, other than the fact that he, I assume he now has the minutes, since I got a copy of the minutes.
What's the, is the Brickyard sale? No.
Was we requiring the land along the River Bay?
It fell through.
And it fell through at the last minute? But I talked-
So there's nothing, nothing we can do at the moment?
We could vote to force the sale, which would be somewhat expensive, and whether we want to or not, or when I talked to, I don't know whether you, maybe you weren't here last week?
Not last week, yeah.
Okay, when I talked to Bill O'Grady, he said he was going to review the minutes of the Conservation Commission meeting, talk to some people, and then maybe just go ahead and do it, or not, but. Thank you.
That attorney is out of East Hampton.
This attorney?
Yes.
East Hampton, like, he's not Copelman and Page?
No.
The, I think the, uh, Jackie Hyde, oh.
Does anybody know where this, I thought it was a description here, Tilton property case, Tilton case?
I'll look at it tomorrow, but I, I don't, it doesn't ring a bell.
So we now have this piece of property?
Anybody there tonight?
Yeah, he is, and I can ask her.
Yeah, and ask her where the other piece is too.
I've never heard of the Tilton case.
It's not Clap on Walcott Road.
Anything else, I can ask her.
No, see if you can find out what this property is.
Walcott's not a big street, and I can't believe, I think it's up by, um-
That is a clap on Walcott Road.
I think that's up by, um, uh, Superintendent Erickson.
Oh, so I entered on, so the judgment entered on January 8th in Tilton case. Thirty-six twenty-four and thirty-six eleven. The question, I mean, I don't know.
I think you should be able to bring that map in.
Clap on Walcott Road, I mean, these are, these are from, in, in my time on the Select Board, these have never, I don't think ever come in front of me to, to know anything about them, so. Let's see if there's anything else we can do as we go along.
Can you, can you, um, pull out the essence of this letter? What are they telling us about a judgment to?
Well, it looks like at some point in time, this, I'm guessing it was tax, that they never paid their taxes, and we sued to get, took the property by, by, um, tax type.
Some former town Select Board was-
Well, they can act on their, can act-
Do that on their own. The treasurer, I think this is the treasurer, she could do it on her own.
But now it's ours. So now it's a question, what do we do? We, we have property, whether there's structures on this property, whether we have, you know, whether we could have potential liability for it, whether, you know, what it is, and should we get rid of it, sell it, move it, do something with it? I mean, because worst case scenario, it's a hayfield, and we gotta mow it come spring. Something so stupid.
It won't be the hayfield.
No, I know, we wouldn't be so lucky.
It'd be a flat piece of dry property, not a way.
It's probably on the side of a hillside with a cliff hanging over and a stream running through the bottom of it.
This one, this clap, I wonder if it butts the water tank?
Which may be all the more reason to keep it.
It's broad, it's a big state. Protected animal. We can't do anything with it.
Yeah, there'd be a turtle on it.
Well, the funny part of it is, up further up Walcott, we have mooses, moose.
Moose. I says a moosa.
Mooses, mooses.
Moose's. What are you reading about that?
No, 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 just, dollars.
You have one mooses?
Yeah.
See, you told me when we have, we have feral pigs.
Yeah. You know where they're from?
No, oh, from?
They ran away from that pig farm at Brickyard.
Brickyard Road. So he-
Are you serious? Where do you actually see a moose?
If you go up to, you know where the water tank is?
Yeah, uh, water tank, water tank, oh, way up on, like, Whiting?
No, 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 Walcott. We were gonna buy two parcels up there years ago. Um, and they wanted more money, we offered, but when we went to inspect them-
Oh, wow, well, that's worth something.
It was, you know, but we don't know where on the pond, and the running areas and stuff.
Well, what about the other piece, Tilke?
That's Walcott Road?
Yeah, way up.
Yeah, but here, Clap on Walcott is a second part.
Maybe see him still?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, you can see their activities.
So this is, this is fine, but you need to get Walcott.
They love mud, there's a lot of mud out there.
Something fascinating to me about-
Yeah, Walcott, you know that area? They walk, they'll go up further past where you, where I've seen you walk, and way up in Fulmer Road.
They go pass out, yeah, we don't walk up there.
Yeah, they go a long distance.
Yeah.
And they got all that area that's protected.
Yeah, I'll have to go up there and, I don't wanna get near it. I don't wanna get here. Say, distance.
Yeah, they, yeah. There's two parcels listed here.
I understand.
One of them is fronted on Middle Road. And the other one's landlocked way the hell out back.
Yeah, but, you know, to connect it.
They're not connected, that's the problem.
Okay.
But she's bringing them in.
Will be nice.
But I mean, if, if, I can't think of on Middle Road where they-
Well, Bob Shuen has some property in there, World hasn't sold it all, too, that's not Clap, that's not that one. But, you know, we can look at them.
Yeah.
And see if we, with the field truck.
It's a big, huge truck with, what do you call it, logging truck.
And if it's not, maybe somebody next door might want it.
Right.
You know, I just wanna keep it on tax.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I always, how much extra land we need? Okay, let's see if there's anything else.
If we were that close, that we could-
Hope we get out of here.
I don't know, if they got math, I could just-
I was gonna throw you-[1651.58]
Yeah, you know, we could hear it sucking, you know.
Just like curiosity, how is this wrong?
They're bigger than horses.
Oh, good.
Huge, like eight feet or something.
We, we had to stop short of putting, uh, the dugouts in for the baseball field and soccer fields, it's all graded and ready to be seeded.
Oh, it's not seeded?
But, uh, I want it, it's not, it's not, it's just to establish it for the winter. And it's gonna have to be reseeded in the spring. And the baseball field's all laid out, you know, fencing is going into where they got bed and they stopped it. Parking lot's done, the driveway's done.
Yeah, that's neat.
Tension basin's done, there's skating on it already.
Oh, there? It's hard to...
Yeah, people are out there, they took it.
Oh, I'll go over and skate.
I'm not kicking them off there, but, you know, I'm not encouraging them either. They wanted to put some lights up, I told them no.
Skate over there. Why don't you, what we can do, um, you took a look at Steve Hyde's letter, right? Why don't you report on...
Which, which issue there?
Hyde.
Hyde.
We had, um...
Regarding vacation, yes.
Since we didn't get any documentation on this, we did our own research and we followed, we got a letter from the police department stating one week that he took off. And then we had an issue, if you remember, where he was on vacation for two weeks on a cruise, we had nobody to do inspections. And through the memos and that, we found out there was another two weeks he took off. So we, the only thing was last, this past year that he was here, he took three weeks off, that we have documentation, our documentation, he took off. Okay, so that leaves him with one week. Plus, I talked to, um, Joe Fair, uh, because of our bylaws, we also own for four weeks for next year. So we talked about five weeks and I talked to Mike, I have, um, Joe Fair write a letter saying that we're gonna send you five weeks.
He had been asking for nine, but we can document.
He's got one week that we can, that we, we can't document, that he had left. He never sent any letters in requesting extra weeks be carried over. And Joe Fair said, because he didn't do that, it's, um, he never asked for them and we're not obligated to give them.
But I, that letter, I guess it was from Joe, who's saying kind of lean over a little bit towards not being too by the...
No, no, we were generous.
Be generous because...
Yeah, we were generous. We were generous, um, if anything, we favored leniency as opposed to being...
I talked to Joe Fair about it and he says, that's fine, and, uh, with the board's approval, uh, we're gonna tell Joe to write a cover letter and finish that letter off and we'll be on.
And we're gonna send a check with the letter?
Mm-hmm.
Why not? Alright, so, so Joe's gonna write the letter?
There's a letter written, a standard letter he wrote, but a cover letter to explain, we have something explaining why, it's five weeks.
Alright, so who's that?
I can talk to Joe tomorrow and do that.
Yeah, let's get that out of the way.
Do you need a motion or anything for that?
Yeah, let's do a motion for that.
And move to, um, submit the letter as discussed to, uh, is it on behalf of? Rewriting it for Joe in a way that we can...
I, I would just simply say...
Can you make a motion to, um, recommend five weeks of, um, past due vacation pay for, for two, five?
Okay, Allen, second?
Second.
Allen Saber?
Aye.
Aye. Here's the one. The, the one that's in the left, right-hand corner bottom, they say sheet twelve or thirty-six. Right now, we're dealing with thirty-six. This is the one, we just got notice that we own. So it's this one and this one, twenty-four and eleven.
That's landlocked.
Yeah.
But...
Oh, over here, to the left.
Whoever owns one might want to buy that.
Why would you, you know, there's always a, to me, it always strikes me funny, why they, they create that crazy...
And which one, thirty-six, here's thirty-six and eleven?
No, in the corner. For the property we're talking about right now is this piece and this piece. This is, we're gonna talk about a separate issue.
Eleven or...
That one we own now.
Twenty-four, what's the five? One seventy-seven, I don't know what their five is up there.
I would say it's...
One seventy?
I would say it's one thirty because they were...
Okay.
You know, one seventy-five is more than...
That's a big lot.
That's a big lot.
But I don't know what the issue is with that, I wanna take a look at that tomorrow. But this one here...
I mean, that's just gonna, if you sell this, it's, we'll sell them together or...
This is a mountain range.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the power lines.
Yeah.
Okay.
That eleven is gonna be the bigger problem to sell. But I can't figure out where, here's the back of this in a circle, so Whitelove has to be over here, so this is probably, do you think this might be the farm around the corner? I don't know, we need the next map down to figure...
I don't think so. I'm gonna take a look at that tomorrow.
It's actually fifty-nine, fifty-seven. So that would be fifty, oh, fifty-five, there it is, right there, that's number fifty-five, so it's...
Look at this big.
These, I think, are all built on those, down the hill.
Yeah, this is all hill. This might be nothing but rock and exposure, it's got nothing, you can't put anything on it.
No, you can't do anything with it.
It's funny, part of it is why did they cut it out?
Why at some point in time, unless it was a wood lot or a...
Uh, they could all, we, hire somebody that's saying, you wanna buy this, we'll give it to you.
Or give it to them.
Gift it or something, but this one here, we need to look at.
Alright, so that's that one, and these two we own, I don't think there's, so there's no structure on that, so there's no circle around the numbers.
I don't think so.
So there's no structure on that parcel.
That's what that means?
Yeah.
When there's, see that little fifty-five in front?
Yeah.
There, there's no circle or square around it.
Yeah, we were looking at that.
That's, that's the planning board numbering system, if there's no circle or square around it, we never, no one ever came in to get it.
Why is this fifty-five over here circled?
Because that number was given out and someone's using the wrong number.
No one did, did what, Mike?
Someone's using the wrong number, there are two fifty-fives there, it shouldn't have been fifty-five. See how it goes, fifty-nine, fifty-seven, fifty-three?
Yeah.
That one's in the middle, should have been house number fifty-five, but then someone down further took fifty-five.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
The box is all over.
A lot of places in town, but here's the numbering system coming up, there's, there's a number every hundred and whatever frontage was.
So what does the circle entail? I mean, what is that?
It technically means the house number, but...
Oh, okay. And if it doesn't have a circle around it, it means...
It wasn't given out, no one ever came in to claim the house number.
Oh, so this is a house number on fifty-five, or nobody...
The, the circle in the back that says twenty-four is the lot number, or plot number, I forget how the sessers call it, twenty-four, plot number, whatever.
Page thirty-six, what's the one on this one?
Uh, this one is, looks, unless we get the next map down. This is twelve, so you'd need map eighteen to know where, if this touches a road, but it doesn't look like it does.
We don't have anything on clap.
No.
Reg?
That's four point five acres, it's on Walcott Road rear.
So can you go get map number eighteen?
You want eighteen?
Yeah. Because that'll tell you what that's close to.
Are these the parcels that we, I mean, what is this overall, some of the parcels we own or not?
No, no, that's all the property, that's the sessers map.
Oh, and how many maps?
Look on the corner in the bottom, it'll tell you how many.
Oh, I thought this was like the whole town.
Each, see, you can find the town through the quadrants. So this is map twelve, so the, the next one down would be eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
It'll give you the bottom corner of this property. So that looks to be landlocked, I don't think.
Yeah, I think that's landlocked, because, uh, Walcott's over there.
Yeah. So where's the water tank though?
So here's the plot of...
No, it's on the other side of the road.
There's a legend there on the...
Nice. Because you only got one acre up there.
Well, where's eighty, thirty-six?
These people are very interested.
Right, I mean, you got a bunch of people that, you got one, two, three, four.
This is, uh, who bought that?
Oh, yeah, so they're telling you, street number is thirty-six. And then this is the plot number, right?
You got at least five people who might be interested in that parcel.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's a good sized parcel, it's three hundred feet by...
Well, she said four.
So all these maps, these are all these different maps of the hotels. And then, and then people take a number.
Oh, I did, I did.
The address.
The ledge comes around here.
Well, so you'll take, you'll check out that one on Middle Road, that might be the one, that might be the home.
Might be a home.
So that's south.
Not a building lot, somebody might want to just buy it.
These streets, yeah.
Put on a payroll.
Really, about these streets, I don't know.
I'm not taking these?
Yeah, you, those are yours. Um, I just had to get that last one, right here, this'll...
But that's just a big, like, that's...
This should be the bottom, right?
Well, is that the beginning of it? Yeah.
Yeah, here it is. Israel Hill.
There it is.
Twenty-four.
Twenty...
That's way up, you don't mind buying that?
This must be eighteen, this must...
Yeah, I see right there, this corner.
This is twelve, so this is eighteen.
Right.
So this must...
Continue on, I guess.
This is where our tank is, right there.
Who owns the frontage on the tank?
Roads.
You have access, you have added access up to Comer Road here.
Alright, well, those, that's done. We don't own that one, generally.
Rattle Hill Road. No, we're just trying to put these maps together to see if we can figure out anything about them. And we just matched Rattle Hill Road and Rattle Hill Road.
Here's the little tip of that property sticking right there.
Yeah, oh, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah. See, I was looking to see if it touched the road, it doesn't, it's a landlocked piece of property.
Oh.
But someone who owns the frontage might be interested in it because they can take it further, make more of it if they take the back one. Alright, um, Fomer Road, oh, we gave that to, we said we gave that, we did the status of the town administrator and fire chief we talked about tonight. We haven't heard back on Newton Roofing, right?
Learned something new.
Highway superintendent, you were gonna get us a job description.
I got something here that was done by... Prior board spent about eight thousand dollars to evaluate, uh, this, my position.
Can you, can you, it's a little hard to hear down.
About five, six years ago, the town spent about seven, eight thousand dollars to evaluate the, um, highway department's, um, position as a DPW director, coordinator. And here's the paperwork, and here is the analysis of the functions, I mean, this is what I brought up, I don't know what else you have, but this is the latest.
Why don't we take...
I was gonna give it, see if this is what your direction you want to go into, then we get copies to everybody and look at.
I think that's a step number one, get everybody out with copies.
I don't know if this is the same thing you had, Reggie?
Uh, Michael, before you go any further, just, um, you were talking about the Newton Roofing invoice?
Yeah.
How did that pan out?
We sent...
We sent a letter, um, where they said they wanted thirty, and then you guys compromised with...
We cut it down?
I'm sorry?
Did we cut it down?
Yeah, we cut it...
They wanted to cut, no, you wanted to cut it down.
Did we, did we resolve that, is it resolved?
No, not yet.
Okay. There's offers and counteroffers out there, but...
Needing to hear back.
Are these on the beds or...
No, this is for the damage, or the, uh, Newton Roofing came in when the ice buildup was there and they chopped the ice off.
Yeah.
And they wanted to get paid for it.
Oh, Newton Roofing here.
They want to hold a hundred thousand dollars in there.
It's on the discussion items, and I was just wondering how that...
It's still pending, we sent, there's been an exchange of letters with offers and counteroffers, but nothing, nothing has...
This is what happened like a few months ago, this is when we first opened the building.
Two years ago.
Find it, miss.
I'm still looking at my notes.
I don't, you keep looking. Um, I guess we need you for town hall security quotes.
I have not requested any quotes at this time. Um, twenty-five hundred, send letter to Newton for twenty-five hundred, if yes, sign a copy to us.
They haven't accepted it?
Yeah.
No.
And what are they asking for, or what was it like?
Thirty-six or something, it's three plus.
Yeah, it was, it's in a packet prior.
And our counteroffer was what?
Twenty-five hundred.
They want thirty-six hundred or thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred, okay, I was thinking, come on now.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine hundred.
Okay.
And eleven.
And what did you offer the twenty-five?
Originally over eleven thousand dollars.
Right, we, it was more than that even before that.
Reg, when did you offer the twenty-five?
The first time or the second time?
Second time, the twenty-five hundred, the last.
They don't have the date, I don't have that for you.
Well, it may have been the last meeting.
The last letter?
Not right away.
I think the last time we talked about it, maybe about a month and a half ago, uh, I think we gave them the same offer.
So you think it's been long enough?
Do you need this right now?
Just for a small change?
No?
No, I don't think so, right, anybody need finance?
John?
John?
Did you guys review that schedule?
Yeah, we made some changes, I'm gonna email you.
Okay.
And go to that.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that matter is still pending.
Thank you.
Town hall security quotes, oh, let me just say that, um, I talked with Chief Silvernail and we still have occasional building lot being left open. And he thinks it's mostly people who come in during regular hours, work, and, and not regular employees, but groups or meetings or whatever. And then the regular employees leave and don't...
The groups are still here.
Here, they don't lock the building, so then they go home and call the police chief and tell them, police department say, you know, we left and we don't think anybody was there to lock the building.
That's better than walking away.
No, it is.
You're supposed to be checking the building every night anyways.
Right.
The question I have is on security and it goes back to a memo Reggie sent out, council on, no, the veterans agent. How many volunteer people are coming in here that have keys to the door, because I hear that's an issue too.
Volunteers?
To my, nobody has keys to the front door.
Those people that work for the federal government that come upstairs, they have keys, Tim, Tim has a key.
To the front door?
To that door, other people have keys too, I heard.
The veterans agent should have a key.
They have a key to the office, but not the front door.
Well, maybe I'm under misnomer, but I heard they had a key to get in and a key to get in the office.
I don't know, I'll look at that.
We need to check that out.
We didn't authorize, we've never authorized any more keys than, other than the original key holders.
Well, I think we gotta find out, I'm just wondering if that's one of the issues.
Would you find out if anybody else in his office has a key to the door, not other than his office door?
They have a key to his office, but not the door, I will find out.
Yeah, we should find out.
So the question comes back to what are we gonna do about... How do we handle this? Who's the last person most of the time out of the building?
Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's me, and I lock the building.
Alright.
Fridays, it's me, I lock the building.
You got, you got these committees that come in here and, I mean, we've all seen them, they, uh, walk out and like they just told you, they'll call the police department, they're not coming back, please go lock the door.
Well, the only thing is the last...
I mean, let's think about it, Mike, we're over across the street, it happened occasionally too.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's not gonna stop, you're still gonna get a few people forgetting to, um, lock the door.
What about with a key, you know, one of those key punchlines, have a card, key card?
That's, my next up was to seek those quotes and I have not had a chance to do so.
Well, the problem with that is then we pass out the codes to everybody and that's an issue, but...
Well, as far as like locking a door, you can program it to shut, to lock the door at a certain time.
I guess the thing is, the fire, the police department should come over here at five o'clock and lock the door.
On six or seven, I mean, I, I think people in this building are, some departments are in here at five, six o'clock, am I right, meeting?
Yeah, but once the, once the town hall closes, other than a public meeting like this...
They should be over here at eight thirty, nine o'clock, you know, after we leave, after the building.
Do we want the building open from, let's say there's nothing going on, do we want the building open from five to nine?
Well, I'll tell you, many times during the day, and I don't blame Reggie, when people are out here, she locks the door.
Oh, yeah.
And other people, that's fine, but when the meetings come open, the doors open again, you know?
I mean, what we used to do a long time ago is if, if we came over and the building was open, we propped the door open to get people in and out for a public meeting, and then as soon as the meeting was over, we pulled the prop out and closed the door.
I, I mean, I have no problem having the police department coming over here checking our doors, they should be, that's part of our security.
I think that should be, but I have the question, because what time do they come in and lock the door?
Meetings can go on to nine, ten o'clock at night, right?
We should have a meeting schedule, we should have all the community folks that are meeting here on a weekly basis or monthly or quarterly.
We do have that, but there's some that, that are not on a regular basis.
Any, anything to say that we have meetings that go on after, say, nine o'clock at night?
Besides us?